Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, January 9th, 2025, first meeting, first official meeting of the year for the city of Marion. So please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the holy saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Misskaman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Present.
Ms. Spencer?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Mr. Sternad?
Here.
Thank you. This time we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. This evening we have two proclamations. The first one is the Proclamation for Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and Councilmember Sternad is going to read that one. We have someone from Chains Interrupted here to accept that proclamation. Please come forward.
Good evening. Whereas human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, and coercion to compel a person into commercial sex acts or labor services against their will, exploitation of a minor or commercial sex is human trafficking regardless of whether any form of force, fraud, or coercion was used. And whereas Iowa has seen a rise in labor trafficking cases, particularly among immigrant children from Central America who are often coerced into exploitation, agriculture, and factory work under the presence of this opportunity, excuse me, pretense into the opportunity, a trend mirrored in other rural communities across the nation. And whereas despite increased efficacy and resources, there remains a stark gap between the number of survivors receiving assistance and the successful prosecution of perpetrators with fewer than 5% of reported trafficking cases in the Midwest resulting in criminal convictions in 2023. And whereas despite increased awareness and efforts among human trafficking continues to be underreported and often goes undetected, with the true extent likely underestimated due to the clandestine nature, the ability to hide it in rural areas, and the reluctance of victims come forward. And whereas every business, community, organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence by addressing the problem of internet sex, trafficking, and exploitation. And whereas nationwide, we have moved away from the play-based to a screen-based childhood, and one in five youth aged 10 to 17 report being approached by an online predator. And whereas the city of Marion joins Chains Interrupted in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and the collaboration of law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Randy Sternad, on behalf of Mayor Nicholas Abou Osley of Marion, Mayor of Marion, I do hereby proclaim the month of January as Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all of our residents to become more informed on this growth problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards the solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at 319-364-0222. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-373-7888. That is a lot. Thank you so much. That is for you.
So it's strange to have my back to you, but I want to say thank you so much for doing this. Every year Marion does this, and as a homegrown Marion High School graduate, I am grateful that my hometown would take this so seriously, something so near and dear to my heart. It's difficult to believe, and it's difficult to imagine that human trafficking is happening right here. But in every zip code, Mayor, you know this, in every zip code and every county on every street, there are children being victimized and assaulted in many, many cases. So I want to give you just a little tiny story. We have 18 specialized training programs that we will go out and train businesses, whether it be Coca-Cola, Unity Point has the same kind of thing, Mercy Medical Center, our law enforcement. It doesn't matter what kind of business you have, we probably have a training session that, a training program that will work for you to see this. I'm going to change the name, but just last month, Ms. Layla came in, was groomed and brought into Cedar Rapids. She was hiding in a bathroom in a business. She hid in that bathroom scared to talk to anybody. She's hiding from a trafficker, right? She doesn't know who to talk to. That business was trained and understood how to talk to her so as not to scare her more deeply. They gave us a call, and our donors are so fabulous that they filled in the gap, and we were able to get her home, which is an anomaly in the trafficking world. Truly 1%, 1% get back home in many cases. So we have to be very, very careful about how we talk to them and what we do. But I'm super grateful to all of you for taking this seriously, and every year Marion does that for us. And we're really grateful for the companies that take care of things. So, reach out to us if you need us. Thank you.
The fact that we have organizations like Chains Interrupted and all their volunteers and their donors and the caring people says a lot about who we are as a community, and thank you for all your work that you do. Thank you. Next proclamation we have is for Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 20th. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And whereas Dr. King's example and teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service. Whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our residents together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And whereas the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service, and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to serve throughout the year. And whereas the city of Marion is committed to equality, social justice, and greater opportunity for all. And whereas residents of Marion, Iowa have the opportunity to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy on the King Day of Service, January 20th, 2025, by participating in service projects throughout our community. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the city of Marion, do hereby proclaim Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a day of service in Marion, and call upon the residents of the community to pay tribute to the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. through participation in community service projects on Martin Luther King Jr. Day and throughout the year. Thank you. The next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone is here to address the council on an issue that is part of a public hearing this evening, there will be time at that time during the public hearing to address the council. So at this time, I would like to read the rules of procedure for public forums. Again, the initial public forum at the beginning of the meeting is for comments related to agenda items that are not associated with a public hearing. The second public forum at the end of the meeting is for other comments from members of the public. There are yellow comment cards at the end of the table near the door. If anyone's going to address council, please fill out a yellow comment card and hand it to the city clerk when you come forward to speak. This ensures that we have your correct contact information and spellings of names for our meeting minutes, which is public record. Please do not approach the dais where the council is sitting. If you have any handouts or materials to submit to the city council, please give them to the city clerk, and she will distribute them to the city council. Once you are called forward by the presiding officer, please step up to the podium and speak into the microphone as the meetings are recorded. You're encouraged to state your name and address and any group affiliation. In order to preserve meeting decorum, please address the council as mayor and members of council. All persons wishing to speak in any designated public forum will be provided a maximum of five minutes each to make their comments. Please do not engage in speech that is imminently threatening to any person or which incites violence or which is obscene. Please refrain from disparaging any individual and keep comments to the topic. Please avoid repeating comments or points made by previous people who addressed the council. Speakers and attendees of the meeting should not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or engage in speech or conduct that interferes with the other people's ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to these guidelines or engage in any disruptive speech or behavior will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. Appreciate everyone cooperating with these guidelines. And we'll proceed with the first public forum. If anyone's here to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one's coming forward, we will close this part of the public hearing. Proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E4, resolution numbers 32213 through 32223.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E4, resolutions 32213 through 32223. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing, a public comment period regarding the proposed C Mar Trail and the acquisition of certain real property from Mount Calvary Cemetery Association. The public comment period is now open. And do we take, oh, go ahead.
Your Honor, I just wanted to give just a brief report on what this item is for the public who may be listening in for council, just to let you know where we are. This public comment period covers the next two resolutions, which are establishing fair market value of certain property owned by Mount Calvary Cemetery Association and authorizing the use of condemnation for that specific property. I do want to make a very important note, which is that that is just authorizing the use of condemnation, and we would still be able to continue negotiations with Mount Calvary Cemetery Association should that opportunity arise. I think that council is pretty familiar with the C Mar Trail project. We do have a copy of the alignment in the council packet, so you'd be able to take a look at that. This is the last portion of that trail, which would connect Cedar Rapids and Marion. It's a multi-jurisdictional project, which has been in the works for several years. And realistically, we are very close on this one. There are three essential tracks in this property, which you can see on the exhibit above. The northernmost one will be a remnant that would be inaccessible to the cemetery after the trail is built. The center portion of that property is what we actually need to build the trail. I don't believe that there's any argument with the acquisition of those two. The argument comes for that southernmost tract of that property, and that property is essentially a ditch. And so the argument is whether or not that's a non-economic portion of property. And the city and the cemetery have been through several conversations and negotiations on that. The city is willing to take it at fair market value, or we have been in the past. However, we need to have an access easement so that we can get in and be able to maintain that ditch. It does serve as a drainage for Cedar Rapids and some for Marion, I believe, as well. And there are some concerns about the stability of the bank that is closest to the cemetery property. And so in order to maintain that, we'd need that access agreement over their property, because the equipment that the Parks Department has to maintain that property would not be able to reach the other side of the bank from the trail. So we would have to go from the cemetery property to do that. And so really, at this point in time, we're really just discussing how do we have the ability to maintain that portion? And that's where we're kind of at in our conversations with the cemetery. But because we have the Destination Iowa Grant, which the C Mar Trail project is part of, we have to keep moving forward. And so we're asking for this authorization so that we don't hit our deadline for that project without having all of the properties fully acquired. The other thing that I would like to note on this is that we also own a cemetery. We have Oak Shade Cemetery, so our Parks Department does have experience in working around burial sites. And we're aware of different procedures and how to maneuver around those burials without disturbing them. So when we move forward in our conversations with them and with the condemnation commission, I think that's going to be an important part of that. We would be looking at moving forward with getting this on file, but again, it would not stall out any negotiation conversations that we could have. And again, I just want to make sure I reiterate that this is a multi-jurisdictional project. It's part of the Destination Iowa Grant, and that's why it's so important that we keep moving forward.
Great. Is there anyone here to address council on this topic? Please come forward. Did you fill out the card?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have it? Okay, great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Tom Takis. I'm a board member representing Mount Calvary Cemetery Association in the acquisition of the land for the C Mar Trail. As Kara said, we've been working back and forth, and we get close, and we, anyway, I think we're making progress. We are a nonprofit entity with three paid staff, and our board is made up of a volunteer lay member and the priest from each of six parishes that govern Mount Calvary. We have been working with you for several months for an agreement on the land for the trail. Excuse me. In the first communication, we were told that it could happen in one of three ways: sale of the land, gift of the land to Marion, or the land would be acquired by eminent domain. We offered the land for 14-1, which was less than half of the assessed value, and Marion agreed to this offer. However, when we received the formal offer in writing, it stated that a permanent 10-foot easement would be required on our land. That would require that equipment be driven over existing graves and lots that have sold easements for future internments. We believe that this is sacred ground, and we would not be able to allow heavy equipment driving on people's graves. I would not want to be the one to tell families that we now allow the city of Marion to drive on their relatives' graves. The response was that if we do not allow the easement, the city of Marion would only take tracks A and B by sale or by eminent domain. The issue of track C is where the problem is. It's a drainage ditch that leads to Indian Creek. Your position is that you need unrestricted access to the south side of the ditch from our property via an easement. The verbiage of the easement does not address when, where, or what kind of equipment would be driven over that property. Also, it states that we would not be allowed any more activity over, under, or through the remaining empty lots without consent from Marion. That would mean a loss of approximately $40,000 to $50,000 in desirable burial lots. The issue we have with the ditch is twofold. First, if Mount Calvary retains possession of the ditch, we would not have access to the north side of the ditch. As Marion cannot give easements to private entities, we would not have access to maintain that property because of where the trail is and where the ditch dumps into Indian Creek. Second, the ditch is essentially a storm sewer carrying drainage from Cedar Rapids and Marion. The trail construction will require extending drainage tubes to direct water further down the ditch. After the trail is completed, we are concerned about how that will affect the water flow and what the long-term effect is, and what kind of effect it would have on the banks of the ditch. We feel this should be the responsibility of Marion to monitor this stormwater flow and prevent erosion from the storm sewer water. It is not our intent to go to eminent domain, and we have tried to come to some common ground to negotiate with you on the easement. We would like the opportunity to sit down face-to-face and talk to you about some of the alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to address city council on this topic? Okay, we'll ask the staff if we received comments outside the meeting.
We did receive a letter from the cemetery board of directors sharing similar statements that were just spoken.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment period. And then for the resolutions, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 32224, establishing fair market value in the amount of $6,570 and authorizing the offer to purchase certain real property owned by the Mount Calvary Cemetery Association.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 32224, establishing fair market value in the amount of $6,570 and authorizing the offer to purchase certain real property owned by the Mount Calvary Cemetery Association. Is there any discussion? Grant, go ahead.
Yeah. Mike or Seth, relative to this diagram that's depicted, where, on which side of the drainage ditch would the trail be constructed? On the south side or the north side?
So the trail is the area that has the long dashes
Okay.
down the center. That's where the actual trail would be, and what they're talking about with track C, if you can see it on the screen, is the southern portion. That's where the ditch is.
Okay. And so relative to trail maintenance, can you characterize the nature of the equipment and the activity that we might anticipate for maintenance-related affairs?
Seth, do you want to take that one?
So for trail, sorry, for trail maintenance, it's going to be with a truck with a plow. The additional maintenance would be really with the creek side, with cutting back vegetation. And that would be done with heavier equipment, typically a larger tractor with a side-mounted arm cutter.
And I'm sorry if I didn't ask this question long ago, but with respect, does the trail provide us any maintenance access that's useful?
So you can use the, so the trail, because it has federal funds, cannot be used for private purposes such as recreation. So you can't take horses on it, you can't take ETVs on it. But we can, you take maintenance vehicles on it. So for example, to maintain our sewer system that we just built down there, we can drive equipment on that. If the cemetery wanted to keep the ditch, they could actually get a hold harmless from us, and they could use that portion of it as well, so they could maintain it from the north side. So it can be used for maintenance purposes. It just can't be used for recreational purposes other than by a non-motorized bicycle or your feet.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I've taken a look at this site. The ditch area is not pretty at all. In fact, on the, on the trail side of that ditch, it's probably about a 15-foot, 70% slope. I mean, it's extremely steep. The cemetery site has a lot of trees on it. And I understand the cemetery's side of this, where, you know, the concern about the graves and the future grave sites and the present ones at all. So I can completely understand that, and certainly we want to be, make sure we're taking care of that aspect very carefully. But from the standpoint of how you do maintenance on each side of it, I don't, I hope we can come up with a resolution down the road on how to provide access, because if we're going to own that, which personally, from a personal standpoint, after looking at it, I would want no part of it. If I were to take a vote, I would want no part of that piece of that land and have the responsibility of the maintenance. But if it requires that in the future, I think the only way we can do that is if we have access, complete access to that in the manner that would be necessary, because that is not easy to maintain or even to get to. So the path we're on, I guess, allows us to move forward from the standpoint of the funding for the trail, and hopefully the communication and negotiations can keep going on and come to a good resolution.
Sarah, go ahead.
This is more toward staff and Kara, Ryan. So, because I understand, this is an unfortunate situation we're in for the community good, but we've got big hiccups on that. And I think we're sympathetic to what, the respect for the cemetery. They're trying to work with us, and I respect that everybody's been really professional in trying to make this happen. What, to not go to eminent domain, but to be able to keep the conversations to hopefully come up with a resolution ourselves, but also understanding that we're under this pretty heavy deadline from federal government as reports of funding, what does sitting down together, coming up with this, what does that look like?
So I am in communication with the association's attorney, and we have had some communication today. And so moving forward, one of the things that we have pending right now is an addendum to the appraisal, which is where we have our basis for the fair market value that comes from an appraisal performed by Rally Appraisal. They are working on an addendum that would add some value for what that easement value would be, taking into consideration the use for the cemetery and things like that. So we are anticipating having that back, which would then be passed on to them. So they would see, here's what we can offer, and here's what we would be asking for at a condemnation hearing. In the meantime, we absolutely can schedule a meeting. I think it would be helpful to have the people from our team who are responsible for our cemetery maintenance and who would be performing the maintenance, sit down with the association and talk about what does this actually look like? Because we would have no intention of driving over and disturbing burials in a way that would be disrespectful in any means. We've been having these conversations for several years. Unfortunately, it was only in, when we started going down the road toward the actual final acquisitions and sending out acquisition packets, that's the point where we started looking at the maintenance side of things, where if we're going to own this, how do we maintain it? where if we're going to own this, how do we maintain it? And I also would like to take this opportunity to clarify that the reason why there would be no easement granted over the trail is that it's already public access. So no easement is needed. Anybody can go on that trail at any time. The only thing we would need would be a hold harmless if somebody was going to drive on it. So if they were going to drive equipment on it, that's the only time we would need a hold harmless. But otherwise, anybody can use that trail for whatever purposes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Why couldn't the city, like, why couldn't Marion give them an easement? Is there a reason to that?
Partially, that goes to, with the federal funds, we can't do a private interest. So like what Mike was saying with the recreation. So the other side of that is that the easement would be, there's no necessity for the easement because they already have access. And so even if they had the easement, there would have to be the hold harmless to protect the trail should it be damaged by the equipment. If we drive on it and we damage it, obviously, we're responsible for fixing it. But if another entity were to use it for maintenance access, and we have this in other portions as well, we just have an agreement that they will have a hold harmless should they need to drive over our trail for any portion in order to maintain their property that's on either side.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number Three Two Two Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing no-nos, the motion carries with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution Number Three Two 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 Five, authorizing condemnation of certain real property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number Three Two Two Five, authorizing condemnation of certain real property. Any discussion? Any questions? Yeah, Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, Kara, just, I just want to make sure that we confirm this point. This resolution, authorizing condemnation, is really our option of last resort. We want to precede this quickly with additional negotiations to reach a satisfying endpoint. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. I don't think either party truly wants to go through the condemnation process if we can negotiate this out. So I believe that both sides are open to continued conversations.
So what was, what's the critical date milestone we're trying to meet? Again, can you restate that?
Previously, our date was actually December thirtieth of last year, or December thirty-first of last year. However, there were some additional considerations came up. So we are in the process of working on what the end date is. However, my understanding is that we would need to have the project let by the, by late spring, early summer of this year. So in order to finalize the, in order to finalize the funding side of it and the letting side of it, we have to have all of the acquisitions completed by that time.
Okay, one last question, I guess. And maybe, Mike, this is for you. From the standpoint of the Metropolitan Planning Organization and their overall guidance and support for trail development in our area, is there any action that would be required by the MPO if we needed extended timeframe? Or is, do they have, against the funding provisions, do they have some hard-decked dates?
So I would have to check the latest agreement. I don't have that right here in front of me. But I can tell you, we did apply back in twenty fifteen, ten years ago, for this project. And as we've done the project, we've split it into five separate phases. And so we went through CNPO through that to break it up so that we could make progress on it as we kept going. Obviously, we wanted to build the trunk sewer project before we built the trail on top of the sewer, rather than, that way we didn't have to tear the trail out to put the sewer in. But now the sewer project is done, and so we're moving forward. If there is a hard deadline with CNPO, we will work with them to get that deadline. But with both Destination Iowa and CNPO, they want the project done.
Sure. Right, and just for general benefit, I mean, the Metropolitan Planning Organization has had an emphasis on, you know, seeing the Seemark Trail completed. And since I just concluded my term of being Chair of that organization, I know the level of interest that everybody in this metro area has on that. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify the importance and what we're doing relative to this particular resolution.
Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, as Kara mentioned, absolutely, the desire is not to proceed down this path. And I think it's important for the public record that we didn't just arrive at this, that there have been discussions going on for quite some time with the city and the cemetery. And it's been in good faith with the desire to arrive at a reasonable outcome so that this project can take place. But again, I mean, this is, this is a sensitive subject, and it's not one that is ideal for a community to pursue. And so we want to make sure that the public that's listening, that they're aware that we have been engaged in discussion for quite some time with respect to this topic. And as Kara said, just this off, this provides the authorization too. And that would allow us to continue those conversations. But we do have deadlines that we are obligated to meet.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number Three Two 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 Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Aye.
Resolution passes with one abstention, and I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance Number Twenty Four Dash Twenty One, approving an amendment to Ordinance Number Ten Dash Twenty Five regarding the Marion Enterprise Center Design Guidelines for property generally located south of Highway One Fifty-One and east of Sixty-Second Street, Marion, Iowa. This is the Marion Economic Development Company, and for final consideration.
Second. I moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Number Twenty Four Dash Twenty One, approving the amendment to Ordinance Number Ten Dash Twenty Five for the Marion Enterprise Center Design Guidelines. This is the final consideration. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Just to accuracy for the public record, it's Marion Economic Development Corporation, I believe. Subtle difference.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving Ordinance Number Twenty Four Dash Twenty One, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number Three Two 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 Six, approving the Marion Enterprise Center Eleventh Edition Revised Preliminary Platt for property generally located south of Highway One Fifty-One and east of Sixty-Second Street, Marion, Iowa. And this is from the Marion Economic Development Corporation.
Second.
Okay, so we moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number Three Two 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 Six, approving the Marion Enterprise Center Eleventh Edition Revised Preliminary Platt. Discussion. All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number, or Resolution Number Three Two 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 Six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing on the request of rezoned property from Lynn County Agricultural and Lynn County Urban Services Residential District to suburban, medium-density, single-family residential. The property located northeast of Lau Park, south of Cimarron Drive, and west of North Tenth Street. Public hearing is now open. We have a brief presentation, Dave.
Yes. Yes, the Alpina Rickles LLC has requested a zoning change from two Lynn County designations, A for agricultural and urban service area, which is essentially Lynn County residential subdivisions. They requested an amendment to SR Two, which is a suburban, medium-density, single-family zoning that permits traditional, single-family homes. It is on the area highlighted on the screen. The property was recently annexed into the city. That has just been recorded with Lynn County a few weeks ago. This is to rezonate approximately thirty-nine point five four acres. There are two existing home sites on the property. Well, one, two properties, two houses on the general area. One of the homes, the original farmstead, will be incorporated into the future development on its own mod. The other home is not part of this rezoning request, but will have to be rezoned here in about two and a half months once the ninety days has passed, because it's not part of this request. The property is currently land use designated as single-family residential, detached residential, which supports the requested SR Two zoning. While not adopted, the future land use map designates the property as low-intensity residential or low-intensity uses, which would also support the proposed SR Two zoning designation. So both the existing and proposed comp plans are supporting the request. Adjacent properties, as was stated, the property to the south and west is Lau Park, currently zoned ROS, which is our open space district. The properties to the north and east are currently zoned USR in Lynn County, and that is the Urban Service Residential Zoning District, which is, again, typically Lynn County rural subdivisions. And then beyond that, it is zoned SR One and SR Two in the city limits, which are very compatible with the proposed zoning request. Proposed zoning does support a variety of lot sizes, but no less than eight thousand square feet, minimum seventy-foot-wide setbacks, and then typical residential setbacks of twenty-five on the front, seven on the sides, and twenty-five on the rear. So very traditional setbacks that we see throughout the community. The Planning and Zoning Commission did meet several months ago and did recommend approval of the request, eight to zero. Tonight, the preliminary plat is not on the agenda, as we have to take care of the rezoning first. The preliminary plat will be brought to the City Council February sixth meeting with the approval, pending approval of the rezoning.
Okay. Public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address the council on this measure, please come forward.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I'm Amy Bishop. I live at twenty-four, twenty-nine Cimarron Drive. I have been here before, and I've presented some of the water features and water issues that we have coming off of that development. So that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. But first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak and address the council. Also, congratulations on the Five Voices People Award for Community-Centric Planning. I thought that was another feather in our cap and a sign of good leadership, and we really appreciate that. That being said, I'm really here to talk about just my lot in particular. I don't represent anybody else by my own concerns at this point. We do have a lot of water that rolls off of that hill, coming back to Cimarron Drive, going from the south to the north, because we're lower where I sit. There's a lot of subsurface water also moving from the tiles that are in the field. And from what I understand, there's no real history of how many layers of tiles there are. And based on some of the preliminary plat meetings I've sat in on, there's going to be significant dirt work done to move the ridge back. My concern is, we've had field tiles that have been damaged in the past and on our property, and there's water coming up through them, kind of like a spring. I'm not saying we have springs, but there's that much water moving subsurface during dry parts of the year that that indicates to me that there's a lot more water moving through that system than visually is, you could calculate. So my concern is, and I guess my ask tonight would be more specifically, the first step in having that developer come out and start moving dirt, I would hope to be a berm or some type of safety water structure that runs along the back of our lots. There is a lot of water, and I'm surprised from when my colleagues, excuse me, my neighbors came and presented their videos and pictures of the water moving on their lots. I had no idea. We have a lot of water moving, and if the builder, excuse me, the developer is going to come out anyway and move dirt anyway, I would be asking that the first step would be a preliminary safety water berm or structure that runs the whole length of the back of our lots. I think this would give the city a nice peace of mind that the residents are protected. I think this would be a win-win for the developer because they get to now see safely how that property is performing as they move dirt, as their excavators move dirt. And it would give us a peace of mind that our properties are secure, having that protective berm or a protective structure. And I'm just talking initially, first thing out, moving dirt around us so that we're protected. They're going to move dirt anyway. They're going to have excavators out there anyway. They're going to probably be doing a berm anyway. I think that that would be a good first step in protecting everybody and giving everybody a peace of mind, and everybody wins. And that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else here to address council? Please come forward.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Dan Dostal. I live at two-four-two-three Cimarron Drive in Marion, Iowa. My garage has flooded twice this year due to heavy rainfall events, and I don't feel that the builder has given us a really good idea of the type of rainfall events that they've forecasted for this to ensure that we don't have more flooding that will occur because this event happens. I'm very supportive of what Amy said in terms of having a berm built back there. That would be good. My house tends to sit at the lowest point in the area, and like I said, my garage has flooded twice. So I just, please, ask to consider this as an option, because I really, it's really annoying when your garage floods. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Vogel, the Tallinn Hall Engineers. I'll be the civil engineer on this project. And just to address their concerns, the first phase will be the north end by the neighbor's house, and we will be constructing a berm to direct the water to the east around their properties. So that is the plan, a berm and a swell, and that will be the first phase.
Okay.
If there's any other questions, I can address those.
Any questions for him?
Have you given any thought to the elevation of that berm relative to the neighboring residents? I'm just kind of curious about that, because long ago in a galaxy far, far away, I had a berman in my backyard at a house I owned, but it was of insufficient size to stop heavy flow of water. So I'm sensitive to the concern that's being brought up here. So can you characterize that, or maybe you haven't studied it yet?
We haven't gotten to the detailed design yet, as we're in the early stages of this with the rezoning, preliminary plating, but it'll be analyzed and adequately sized.
Yeah, so just on my, the basis of my personal experience, really, you know, be very diligent in that design of that berm to protect those properties. Thanks.
Oh, glad to see you. So I mean, I'm hearing all the comments tonight. I mean, we're just talking about rezoning tonight. Clearly, when we get to the February sixth meeting, I think these details need to be specifically addressed and outlined, not only talking about the surface water, which a berm will help with, but the subsurface, and making sure both those levels are taken care of. So I don't necessarily need all those details tonight to affect any decision on the rezoning, but come February sixth, we will want all those details specifically spelled out.
Yep, as it's developed, there'll be storm sewers and subdrain for all the streets. It'll collect the water, and this is the high side. There's more of a problem when you're developing a lower side. You're cutting those tiles off, and they're still trying to, well, we'll be at the top side, so we can take that groundwater and direct it where we need it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to address council, please come forward. Ask the staff if we have comments outside the meeting.
I have not received any.
I have not either.
Thank you. Okay, seeing that no one else is coming forward. Oh, yes.
I just wanted to mention, so when we, when this preliminary plat gets submitted, when Hall and Hall does that, it's not construction-grade. Construction plans, when they do the preliminary plat, it's very high level.
Oh, that's true.
And so when we get to that level of And so when we get to that level of very detailed, that's when Darren will do that detailed review, they have a very thick drainage report they'll have to do, and then I'll have to approve those plans before they can even construct anything, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Just.
Was it a question we could ask?
Yeah, I'll save it for the ordinance.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Any other people to address council or comments outside the meeting? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll proceed to the ordinance.
Your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one, approving a request to rezone property from Lynn County A Agricultural and Lynn County USR Urban Services Residential District to SR two, suburban, medium-density, single-family residential for property located northeast of Lau Park, south of Cimarron Drive, and west of North Tenth Street, Marion, Iowa. This is on behalf of Mooney Angle and Rick Phil's LLC. This is our initial consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one, approving the request to rezone the property from Lynn County Agricultural and Urban Service Residential District to suburban, medium-density, single-family residential. The property located northeast of Lau Park, south of Cimarron Drive, and west of North Tenth Street. Initial consideration. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Mike, just tagging off of your last comment, there's obviously a process and a sequence to go through here. Is there any opportunity to accelerate, review, approval, and construction of a berm so we just take this headache away real quickly prior to any other activity happening? And this is exposing my grave, terrible ignorance on the process, so.
Yeah, so I have not sat down with Hall and Hall and talked about this, but generally what they do is they'll take that entire area that you see in purple, they'll do a mass grading plan for that, but then what they'll do is they'll break it into phases, because they're not going to build all those houses at once. And say they do phase one, which is just the northeast quadrant, and then that's where they're going to put storm sewer, sanitary water, the road, and then start building houses. Once that starts filling up, then they do phase two, but they still use that master grading plan that would show that berm with the detention basins that are required and that ditch. So it all kind of depends on how fast the development goes. So that's not actually in the city's
Right.
purview to make accelerated or decelerated. It just depends on market and how fast that goes.
But the final approval that you give is going to be based on being comfortable that the water is being managed, right? I mean, you know, and handled properly. That's, that's part of your, your role.
Correct. So if you recall, you know, we updated the FEMA maps this past year, and based on the rainfall atlas, FEMA raised some of the base flood elevation in places three feet. So we use the rainfall atlas of the rainfall events that we have on record, and obviously with global warming, that's changing. So designs that we may have done twenty years ago aren't the same that we do today, so we just take the latest and greatest information, and that's how we design for.
Okay. Yeah, and I would just reiterate, we've been through this before with other county subdivisions, where there was lots of water in the former county subdivisions coming through there, and the development around them actually helped, helped the problem, fixed the problem because of the installation of retention pond, retention ponds, and, and the water management features that, that are required as part of developing land.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
Well, I think, you know, everyone understands what the issue is, everyone understands the concerns of the homeowners. I think communication is the key in keeping everybody apprised and everybody being mindful of, you know, what the potential issue is, and that we need to make sure that it's addressed properly, so. Any other discussion? Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate and go on the record as well, too, just simply saying that, you know, these are, these are common problems, especially those homes out there. What we don't want to also do is create a bowl effect out there. You know, by putting a berm up there, that's surface water becomes subsurface water, which in turn your, some pumps are now trying to pump the water from below back onto the surface with no, no place to go. So the insurance part of me says, I've got some concerns about this as well, too. I know you'll address those. I just want to make sure that we have a high-level view when we talk about berms. Berms or not, it's to create some water out, but then the same token, too, the best analogy I can give you is, is creating a bowl out in that particular area there. If I'm not mistaken, are those curbed, is Cimarron curbed on the east side? I don't think so. I do not, I think it's all runoff, so I want us to be mindset, mindful of that as well, too. Claims with water sewer backup is getting to be a bigger and bigger problem, and insurance rates going up is a bigger and bigger problem. So we have to really make sure we're paying attention to this hydraulics of water in these particular subdivisions. So yeah, we're controlling the water coming off of those new grades, but by same token, too, we don't want to create ones on the other side. So again, I'm just trying to put full clarity to this. I'm trying, I'm trying not to drill down into something that we're not there yet, but I want everybody to know that we have a full focus on, on this full project. So I appreciate it and, and look forward to moving along with it.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll vote, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five dash zero one on the rezoning of this property. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next item is the second public forum on the agenda this evening, which is a time to address council on any topic. Anyone here to address council? Please come forward. Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Start with Steve. Okay?
Nothing, your honor.
Page?
Nothing from me.
Sarah? Will?
No.
Eddie?
I'll break the trend. Happy New Year, everybody. We, we wish everyone success and health in 2025.
All right, so if you've been around long enough, you know that I like to begin the first council meeting of every year with, with a little bit of, a few comments. I'm, I'm starting my tenth year as, as mayor this year. It's hard to believe it's been that, that long, and I just, as you might imagine, I'm getting in the mode of writing the state of the city speech, you know? And it takes, takes me a couple of months, but it's a, it's a time to contemplate, and and it just, I always start thinking a lot about, you know, where we've come and how much we've accomplished, and it's, it's truly mind-boggling how much, how much the city has changed and how much we've accomplished in this last decade. I just kind of made a mental kind of list, like ten years ago, we didn't have the YMCA, we didn't have the new fire station, we didn't have Prospect Meadows, we didn't have the library, we didn't have the uptown streetscape and the plazas, we didn't, we had one roundabout. Now, we, we didn't, we didn't have the Sculpture Trail or most of it, the Skate Park, Waldo's Rock Park, the Inclusive Playground, Prairie Hill Park, the Public Works Building, Easttown Crossing, and all that development east of Highway thirteen, the Holiday Inn, the Town Place Suites, and all the development around the Town Place. And if you've been here long enough, you remember what an eyesore that area was as an old industrial area. The east end development around the hotel, the, the large residential facilities that have come online, Tower Terrace Road, Sixth Avenue, the MEC had the police station and maybe one or two other tenants in there, the Grant Wood Trail, the Seymour Trail, the Indian Creek Trail, Encore Cafe, the Mary's Youth Council, the two emergency medical facilities, and we can go on and on and on and on, all of that in, in ten years or less, most of it in less than ten years. That, that doesn't happen by chance. That happens because there are caring, committed, dedicated people who are, who see a vision and who work together towards that vision, who truly care about serving a community and creating a special place. It happens because we, we look forward and, and dream together. And I'm just so proud of how far we have come. I dug out my, it used to be that the Marion Times would print the whole state of the city speech. I dug out my first week. I just want to read a few things. This is, this is, well, I guess a few weeks after my taking the oath of office in January of 2016. Marion is growing and changing. These are facts we can't deny or escape. While growth is positive in many ways, it can also present challenges, so we're working smarter, thoughtful planning, to be part of the solutions to those challenges, working to accommodate and direct the growth in a manner that minimizes negative impacts on our residents' quality of life, identifying the opportunities to enhance our quality of life and ensure prosperity of our city into the future. We're improving ourselves and how we do things. I have and will continue to urge our city and our residents to set lofty goals and higher standards, to believe that Marion deserves more than what is simply good enough. What's really cool about hearing all this is like, you know, I think now we're all speaking that language, and to strive in everything we do to achieve the best for our city and its, its citizens. Our goal is nothing less than to be the best place in the Midwest to raise a family and grow a business. How will we reach our goal? This begins with our city council and staff. Several months ago, the city council met to discuss our core organizational values, the ways in which we, as a city, will conduct business. After much discussion, we came to this list. Fiscal responsibility and stewardship, leadership, professionalism, knowledge, and evidence-based decision-making, not based on speculation or personal opinion, but on facts and verifiable evidence, trust, honesty, transparency, extra effort. I was raised on the notion that a little extra effort determines success. Respect, even in our differences of opinion, accountability, responsibility, dependability, fairness, and, most importantly, teamwork. One area we're always working to better ourselves is community engagement and communication with the residents of Marion. We can't effectively address our challenges as a community or hope to achieve consensus on future direction if we aren't operating on the same facts. The city will always work to make information readily available to its residents, and the residents have an equal responsibility to seek out the facts and to do their homework on important issues. We'll continue to make communication and community outreach a priority. So if you are Marion... Oh, wait, I wanted to read this. About our tagline, "Reach Higher." I love that tagline. Many cities have brand logos and taglines, but Marion's is truly unique. It's not merely descriptive, it's proactive, it's aspirational, it's a call to action, and it speaks to everyone. So if you're a Marion resident, reach higher, take time to learn about your city, get to know your neighbors, become engaged in your community, believe that Marion can be the best place for families and businesses, learn about what's going on and what we have to offer, volunteer on boards and commissions, give back, promote positive and positivity and openness to new initiatives, contribute your ideas, vision, and expertise. If you are a city employee, staffer, or council member, you're doing a great job, you're our best assets, but we can always do even better, starting with the mayor. Work even harder, work smarter, and always, always take the initiative to do a little more than expected. You're the face of our city to residents and people doing business here. We're counting on you. Aspire to greatness. If you're, if you're designing, planning, building, or working on any project in Marion, including a subdivision, reach higher. Please don't give us what's good enough. Think about curb appeal. We expect your best. Give us your best. Marion deserves your best, your most creative, most attractive, most special work. Dream a little bigger, give a little extra effort, reach higher. If you're a business located in Marion, reach higher, believe in Marion, believe in its potential, and then help us tell our story. Approach new initiatives with a positive why-not attitude rather than a what-for attitude. Keep an open mind to the possibilities and contribute your ideas and vision to helping our city grow and prosper. We're all in this together. Reach higher. And it goes on, but it's, it's just really interesting to look back. Sometimes we lose perspective of how far we've come and where we were. And it's, to me, it's just so encouraging to see after these nine years that, you know, we are all speaking the same language now, we're all on the same path and the same track, we all have the same vision, and everyone is giving their best. And I see everyone just contributing their absolute best and working hard and trying to make this community the greatest community in Iowa, and we're getting there. We're recognized for it nationally. Every year, we, we're recognized somehow, some way, and wherever we go across the state, Marion is the topic. So thank you for everything you're doing. I just hope that this inspires you a little bit to, as we start off this new year, I think we're going to have a tremendous year with lots of accomplishments, and we're going to have challenges, of course, as we always do, but continuing to work together, to see the big picture, to give each other the benefit of the doubt, and to think of the team, and see the best in each other. We'll get, we'll get past all our obstacles and continue to shine. So thank you so much, and have a great, great evening. Meetings adjourned.